We'll call this meeting the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. If everyone would please stand for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance and the posting of colors. Let us pray.
Gracious God, grant her of all things great and small, we come before you this day with a humble invocation. We pray for your support for all those who were victims of the attack in Las Angeles, Las Vegas. Be with those who have lost loved ones and comfort them in your tender mercy. We pray for those injured, that the doctors and medical science will help them to recover and rejoin their families. We pray for our soldiers, sailors, and airmen, serving to keep our country safe. Watch over them, and we pray that they will return to their families safe. And we pray for the families that are left at home, that you will strengthen them in these times of separation. We pray for your blessing on this assembly. Guide us in our discussion and help us to make decisions that best serve the educational needs of our children in our public schools. We ask for your blessing on our president as he travels. Guide him in his decisions that he makes for the good of the country. We pray for our state leadership, for our local leaders, that we may all serve the interest of our children in this country. This we humbly pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, why so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose fresh shires and bright stars through the perilous night, o'er the red waters we wash, were so gallantly streaming? And the rock is red, the sun's bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Amen.
Did you want to give back to you?
Yes, yes, please, go ahead. By the way, let me just simply say that the national anthem was presented by Roland Greys Middle School Chorus, Principal Charles Broadfoot, Instructor Alexia Swan.
I'm Abigail Bowles, and I'm in the eighth grade.
I'm Annalee Urbina, and I'm in the eighth grade.
I'm Jennifer Cruz, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Lindsay Backley, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Carrie McWilliams, and I'm in the eighth grade.
I'm Zitlala Hernandez, and I'm in the eighth grade.
I'm Regina Price, and I'm in the eighth grade.
I'm Kelly Paget, and I'm from eighth grade.
I'm Catherine Lennon, and I'm in the eighth grade.
I'm Isabella Carroll, and I'm in the eighth grade.
I'm Bailey Hughes, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Katie Ryan, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Cameron Queen, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Taylor Applewhite, and I'm in eighth grade.
Much ladies for being here.
And our color guard were cadets from John T. Hoggett High School, Naval Junior ROTC, Principal Dr. Steve Sullivan, instructors Commander David Everett, and Staff Sergeant Richard Gulliato. If y'all'd like to come up, we'd like to recognize you two. If you would tell us your name, your grade, and your rank.
Cadet Enzen Manning, grade 12.
Cadet Lieutenant Junior, grade O, 12th grade.
Cadet Enzen Astrakis, 11th grade.
Cadet Lieutenant Commander Kerman, 12th grade.
Thank you. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Adams?
Here.
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 Ms. Adams?
Before we move on, I want to welcome everyone.
As you can see, we have somewhat new digs, and we hope that it will serve the needs and interests of the citizens of New Hanover County. We actually think it will create more space, gives us more flexibility, so I want to thank the superintendent and the people in Mr. Anderson's division for making this possible, so thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I need to request that we remove the item under "All Business" labeled "Lab School." That'll be, we'll bring that back at the November meeting. That is Appendix H.
I move for approval of the agenda as revised.
There's another addition, though, that has been requested, and that is to add under "All Business," number E, discussion about the plaque at Portisneak Elementary School. I couldn't think of it.
My motion includes that change also.
Aye, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Actually, Mr. Higgins, that was discussed to put that on at a later time.
Yeah, but there was another request to put it on today. There was a second request to put it on today, so that's the reason it's on today.
Okay.
And I would vote nay.
Okay, so what's, I got ayes, who's nay? I just want to know who you are.
Question, if you're adding to the agenda, don't you have to have two board members?
We do, we had two.
You do have to, okay.
Can you list the two, please?
Say what?
Could you list the two, please?
List the two?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols and myself.
Thank you.
All right, so it is, Ms. Shear, how are you voting? I'm just trying to get clear. You voting to approve the agenda or not to approve?
I voted to approve.
Okay, I just want to be clear. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes, special meeting minutes for September 30, 2017. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It is approved.
Next item, recognition of achievement. I have one item before us, the community partnership, the Masonboro Organization. Let me, I need.
I want you to announce this, Mr. Higgins.
Say what?
I want you to announce.
Well, we ask the audience to please remain seated until the conclusion of the recognition ceremony. When exiting the meeting, please leave as quietly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. We would like to announce that October is National Principals Month, and during the month of October, we honor and recognize the great work that our principals do. In New Hanover County Schools, we have 44 principals and 59 assistant principals who invest their time and talents as our school leaders. So, we encourage you, if you see one of our great principals this month, please thank them for the great work that they do. And tonight, we have one community partnership recognition. We have our friends from masonboro.org here in their beautiful red shirts to present to us, and they would like to start off by showing us a brief video.
In 2013, we launched the Island Explorer Program. Since then, we have taken thousands of students to Masonboro Island. We thought if we wanted to save the island for the next generation, we better figure out a way to let them know how special it is.
It surprises me each year how many of our fifth grade students have never been to the beach, never hunted for shells, or explored the local wildlife. Masonboro Explorers connects the content we learn in the classroom with real-life, hands-on experience that helps students create meaningful connections to our curriculum, connections that they remember for a lifetime. Teachers learn from Masonboro Explorers as well, allowing us to strengthen our lessons in the classroom. Each time, I've learned something new, from how low-pressure systems impact the amount of fish in the area, to how oyster farming works.
One of the missions of the North Carolina Coastal Reserve is to use our Masonboro site as an outdoor classroom and living laboratory. Masonboro Island is a wonderful example where students can learn about North Carolina's valuable estuary ecosystems through observations and hands-on experiments. During the field trips, students will learn about water quality, shoreline stabilization, island ecology, and weather patterns, and all of these activities are aligned with North Carolina's fifth grade curriculum standards.
There are always these children that are both excited and somewhat scared to take their first boat ride, and they have this opportunity to be with their friends and to create these memories that really are more than just fifth grade, they're lifetime memories they're going to take with them.
One of the things I love about the Island Explorer Program is all the contributors. It starts with Duke Energy Foundation grant. We couldn't even put gas in the boat without their support. We also have the collaboration between the North Carolina Coastal Reserve, Carolina Ocean Studies, and New Hanover County Schools.
Duke Energy has been proud to support the Island Explorers Program because it makes perfect sense for us. This program is cultivating our state's next generation of environmental stewards. So imagine a future where these children don't only care about Masonboro Island, but are caring about all the incredible natural resources in North Carolina. For Duke Energy, that's a smart investment.
We began Carolina Ocean Studies 25 years ago to bring students into contact with the magnificent public barrier islands that are theirs. The main thing that we hope that the students gain from this program is a thrill for learning. We were thrilled when masonboro.org approached us because what a better way to bring our local students out to Masonboro Island. We're also hoping that the students that come out with us today will grow up to be future stewards of this island by way of the Island Explorers Program.
I think the best part of the program is watching these kids, some of them who've never been on a boat or to a beach, watching them learn, get excited about seashells and living things. It's just a beautiful, beautiful experience.
So when masonboro.org came to us with, you know, the idea that we might be the educators for the program, we were super excited because of the opportunity and the potential, and especially because we wanted to make sure New Hanover County kids got out here. So I'd been teaching for, I don't know, a year and a half, and I kept wondering, where are New Hanover County kids? So I was so excited to find out that this might be the program that meant that all those kids got to come out. New Hanover County kids deserve to explore this island. It is their island in their own backyard. I mean, North Carolina, we all own this island, but New Hanover County kids, every kid should be able to get out here. I think that what they're getting out of the program is the real-life connection to what they're learning in the classroom. So it brings home all those concepts that they're reading about, or their teacher is teaching about, or they're even seeing in all this new social media, not as, it's not equal to actually being immersed in it. The Island Explorer Program is securing the future of this island.
I liked the Island Explorer Program because it went right along with what we were teaching about ecosystems, and it was really great for the kids to be able to see and observe and interact in an ecosystem and get their hands dirty.
I always enjoy going crabbing with the kids because that's like the one thing they're super excited about. I like the Island Explorer Program because it teaches the kids about our curriculum and they get to have hands-on experience.
Masonboro Island was just so fun!
Island Explorer!
Yeah!
To crash.
Yeah, they were very big, long legs.
I love Masonboro Island.
Good evening. Chairman Higgins, for. Got a few people I want to thank first. Want to thank our masonboro.org volunteers. Want to recognize Karen Williams from the Duke Energy Foundation. Certainly couldn't do it without her. I want to recognize the Board of masonboro.org for being here this evening. And I'd like to recognize Carolina Ocean Studies. Carolina Ocean Studies, please stand up. Let me first start by recognizing Mark Hayworth. Mark, stand up. Mark put our video together for us in a very short amount of time. He did an amazing job with that video that you just saw. Thank you very much.
The organization known as masonboro.org was formed in 2009 when a small group of people got together with the mission of protecting public access to the island. Most people know us as the folks who clean up the island on the Fourth of July. In 2013, we started the Island Explorer Program. This program provides a unique opportunity for New Hanover County students to learn firsthand what a precious resource Masonboro Island is. Our goal with this program is to help create the next generation of coastal stewards. We started the program with Sissy Brooks at Riceville Beach Elementary and took 50 fifth graders to the island for an educational field trip in the fall of 2013. The kids loaded onto a Riceville Beach singing tour boat at the Marine Max Dock, and the Island Explorer Program was born. In the spring of 2014, Dr. LaShawn Smith, who's here tonight, thank you, Dr. for being here, became our program mentor. We worked with Dr. Smith to expand the program and include more Title I and underserved schools. At that time, we also started a key partnership with the North Carolina Coastal Reserve to better align the on-island curriculum with the public school educational objectives. As a result of these efforts, we were able to take 150 students to the island during the spring of 2014. During the 2014-2015 school year, we expanded the program to over 300 students. At that time, the New Hanover County School Insurance Policy limited the size of the boat we could use to 25 students at a time. Basically, our program was maxed out, and to grow, we knew one thing. We needed a bigger boat. The Winter Cruise Queen allows us to take up to 120 students per trip. We owe a huge thanks to Wayne Bullard.
Thank you, Wayne.
For tirelessly working to find the coverage for the bigger boat. The 2015-2016 school year was a big milestone for us. Carolina Ocean Studies became our educational provider. We worked with both the Coastal Reserve, Carolina Ocean Studies, to customize the program towards the fifth grade marine science curriculum. As a result of these efforts, we launched what we know as IsleX 2.0 and took over 900 students to the island. Everyone loved the program, especially the kids. As a result of the program's success, the Duke Energy Foundation expanded our grant from 10,000 to $35,000. This made it possible for over 1,400 students to participate last year. Thanks to the efforts and support of many, but especially Duke Energy Foundation, this year we've reached another major milestone in offering the program to every fifth grader in the New Hanover County Public School System.
Our program growth over the last five years speaks for itself. This is a photo of students learning about the world water cycle, and here you see instructors engaging students through questions and answer learning. As a small nonprofit, we only raise what we need. We work to maintain the cost of the program to approximately $35 per student. Our program has thrived due to the support of many stakeholders, is much more than a public-private partnership. The Island Explorer Program has seven key stakeholder groups. The North Carolina Coastal Reserve, Carolina Ocean Studies, and New Hanover County are focused on the curriculum. Duke Energy Foundation and gifts from many others help fund the program, and finally, masonboro.org and our volunteers ensure that every trip is a success. It's important to note, behind every stakeholder group, there are actually people working very hard to make sure all the pieces fit together. We certainly want to thank each and every one for their efforts. We also have the Board at masonboro.org. Board members volunteer hundreds of hours each year so we can do some really amazing things. We want to especially recognize Kathy Rains, our Island Explorer Coordinator. This program could not exist without her effort. Unfortunately, she broke her foot yesterday and could not stand up. We also would like to personally thank Steve Diab from Merkison Taylor and Rob Wagner from RSM. They keep us in track and out of trouble. And finally, we would like to thank New Hanover County School Board of Education for inviting us here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would be remiss if I didn't say hello to Richard Zeselski, who was one of my former students many, many years ago, sixth grader. I still see his sixth grade face.
It's his boats that take us out there, so appreciate that.
I just want to say that I've had the opportunity to join you. I didn't get to go this year, but I have had the opportunity in the past, and I would simply say to the members of the Board, if you get an opportunity to go, it is a learning experience, it is an interesting experience. You see things, you watch the kids, as you said, they quite often, geez, I didn't know this was here, and some of the things that, you know, if you didn't grow up, now I know Mr. Hayes lived in the water.
I'm waiting to tell a story, Mr. Higgins.
Yeah, well, I know you are probably, but, you know, if you didn't grow up down on the sound or down near the water, you're a Piedmont person like I am, it is a fascinating event, so I would just simply say to all my Board members, if you get a chance to go, take that opportunity because it is a wonderful experience, it's a wonderful learning experience, but it's also a wonderful experience to share with the kids. So thank you for all y'all are doing.
And I would just like to add one little thing, that having had the good fortune to grow up down on Myrtle Grove Sound, as a kid, we used to go in rowboats, nobody had motors, and I bet none of you remember Goat Island, do you? When it was out in the waterway between Myrtle Grove and Riceville Beach, there was one of those small islands, had a little house on it. Guy had an airplane, actually, came back and forth by air. About 30 to 40 wild goats over there, so on days when fish weren't biting, we really didn't have anything to do, we'd go over there and tackle goats. We didn't hurt them, but we'd keep scores to who could tackle the most goats in a short amount of time, except for the large billy goats with the horns and the large beards, you didn't bother them. But Masonboro brings back so many memories, because like I say, as kids, 12, 13 years old, we'd go over there and spend a week or so at a time, you know, fishing, oystering, clamming, crabbing, whatever, we just lived off the land and didn't make a mess. So I certainly think this is a great program and glad the kids are, the number has grown of those that can take advantage of it.
We have volunteer spots open as early as tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Oh, wow. Thank you very much.
Thank you for supporting us. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Where Brown?
Thank you.
All right, well, next item on our agenda.
I want to ask the principals to stand.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. Since it was acknowledged that it was Principals Month, if you are a principal in the New Hanover County School System, I'd like for you to stand so we can recognize you.
Or if you've been a principal.
Well, if you've been a principal. Thank you for your leadership in our school system. Next item on the agenda is the call to the audience. We had one person sign up, but I understand they have withdrawn their name for tonight, so therefore we now have nobody to speak. Next item on our agenda is administrative personnel.
They'll be done this evening.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the Head Start Report. Mr. Shear.
We have two items tonight in general. First is, we'll talk about the Expenditure Report, which we're required to show, and you're required to understand as the fiduciaries for this organization. And then secondly, we'll talk about some more, about conscious discipline, which we alluded to at our last meeting. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about what that is, how it makes a difference, and then we're going to show you a video at the end of that, Mr. Batiste, who's coming to New Hanover County on October 24th. So if, as you can see on your screen and the folks in the audience, we have an expenditure report, and it is modeled behind the grant that we received, does not match our fiscal year, but we have 12 months of data to compare to for the year. We are four months into our year, or one-third of the way. We have spent 20 Thank you for your leadership in our school system. Next item on the agenda is the call to the audience. We had one person sign up, but I understand they have withdrawn their name for tonight, so therefore we now have nobody to speak. Next item on our agenda is administrative personnel.
They'll be done this evening.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the Head Start Report. Mr. Schell.
We have two items tonight in general. First is, we'll talk about the Expenditure Report, which we're required to show and you're required to understand as the fiduciaries for this organization. And then secondly, we'll talk about some more about conscious discipline, which we alluded to at our last meeting. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about what that is, how it makes a difference, and then we're going to show you a video at the end of that. Mr. Baptiste is coming to New Hanover County in October 24th. So if, as you can see on your screen and the folks in the audience, we have an expenditure report, and it is modeled behind the grant that we received, does not match our fiscal year, but we have 12 months of data to compare to for the year. We are four months into our year, or one-third of the way. We have spent 24%, so we're under budget, which is normal as we go through the summer months. In our discussion, everything appears to be as planned for. Are there any questions about the expenditure report? Okay, with that, we'll move on, and we'll talk about conscious discipline. And I'll tell you what it means to me, and then you'll hear from the experts. To me, it's a connection with the student with the goal of enhanced self-regulation. And many children come into the classroom, and they don't have that awareness of self-regulation. And I'm going to turn it over and ask Ms. Smiles if she'll talk to you in a more intellectual way. But to me, it's a powerful concept that we're in the fourth year of that with early childhood. And I think from all that I can hear and see, that it's going well. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Smiles.
Good evening, Board members. Conscious discipline is much more than a classroom behavior management system. It's focused on relationships and connection with our students. And I think that we're just so super proud to announce that we're on our third year of implementation, and by the end of the day, the teachers can know that they've got this. So I'd like to start out with the video, and then if we have any questions following the video, we can have some discussion with our team.
My name is DJ Baptiste, and I was born in La Combe, Louisiana. I was raised by my grandmother. I was born to a 14-year-old mom and a 16-year-old dad, so they were young, they really weren't able to make too many decisions. I was very defiant, though. I hated, I loved getting in trouble because getting in trouble got you attention. I was the type of student where I loved attention, so, and I did whatever it took to get attention. I was the leader of a gang, and let me tell you why, because in a gang, we got that sense of security and a sense of belonging. We feel like, these are my homies, they're going to take care of me, they got me, no matter what. So they give us that sense of belonging. Fight, fight, that was our only option. We had a disagreement, we fought. Whether we playing basketball, playing hide-and-go-seek, it didn't matter. If there's a disagreement, we fight. So I was raised like that, and that's how, that was instilled in my head. There was no other option. You fight, you fight, you fight. You had to be violent, violent. And we, I'm going to tell you, we liked to fight in school because we know we had a crowd, so we continued to get kicked out of school, we jumped people, I mean, just so much violence. I never, never was a second thought. When it came to my head, that's what I did. If I wanted to fight, boom, I'm fighting. If you're close enough where I can put my hands on you, I'm hitting you in your mouth. That's just how I was. I did go to juvenile twice. Me and my homeboys riding, one time we got pulled over by the police. The police found some pistols, pistols in the trunk, pistols up under the seat, and we, we weren't even headed to, out of all the times we done had guns on us, headed to go do something, the police never stopped us. But this time, we were just riding around with the guns, and he stopped us. And they confiscated all the guns and took us down, took the guns, and yeah, pretty bad. It was my first day of my senior year at school, and everybody was always telling me, since you hate school so much and you're ready to get out of school, then why don't you just go ahead and put forth a little effort and finish your senior year? And I didn't look at it like that. I looked at a school as a place of, that's where I can associate, this one I can, I can make people laugh, I can, I can, I can be a leader still because people want to see me, people want to follow me. I can look at girls, and if anything's going on between the hours of 8 and 3, it's going to happen in school, so I didn't want to miss it. So that was, that was my little motivation for school, to go to school because I didn't want to miss anything. And I walked in, Miss P-class, that's what I called her, Miss P-class late.
My name is Donna Porter, and I teach public speaking at Picking Memorial High School in Picking, Mississippi.
I knew, I sat back and thought about it. When you, when you're late to something, everybody looks at you.
And all of a sudden, the door flings open, and this huge student that I've never seen in my life walks in and says, "What's up?"
And she looked, and I said, "What's up?", you know? And I just had the attention of the class that fast.
My first thought is, why did this happen to me? On the first day of school, when I'm trying to set the tone? And then I thought, I've got this. Thank goodness I've got this. But to be able to access my brilliance, I have to take a deep breath, stay composed, and watch him, look at his nonverbal language, because all behavior is purposeful.
She said, "Well, I noticed you late in my room. There's no problem because you probably couldn't find it." I just kind of looked at her with this crazy look, like, yeah, whatever. And then she was like, "Well, have a seat." And I looked at her, I said, "Do you have any kids?"
And I said, "Well, actually, your name is DJ, Mr. Baptiste. I have two, and I just informed the class about it, but because you missed my room, you didn't hear. So are you married?", he said. And I said, "Actually, I just told the class, I've been married for 30 years."
I stepped back and said, "30 years?", folded my arms, looked up and down and said, "Don't you think it's time for a change?" Now, at that point in time, right there, I expected her to get red in the face, lose her composure, run to her desk, get a referral, write me up and send me out. I was ready for that, that's what I expected. And now that I've learned, the brain seeks patterns. So that was the pattern that my brain was seeking. You be disrespectful, you get sent out of class, but you get the attention that you want. She didn't do that. She looked at me, she smiled and said...
Do you go to the doctor when you're well? And he looked at me very funny, he said, "No, you go when you're sick." I said, "Do you come to school when you know everything?" He said, "I guess not, I guess you come supposedly to learn." I said, "Well, you've got a lot to learn, and I can't wait to teach you." And then I left him with that feeling of angst. And then I said, "You know what I notice more importantly about you? You have charisma."
Charisma? You know, she was like, "Do you know what that means?" I said, "I'm cute." And everybody in the class laughed, and she was like, something like that. She was like, "But you just know how to work a room?", you know? And I said, "All right, I was just listening to her." She was like, she threw me off because she started talking good about me after. I wanted her to be kind of getting into a power struggle with me, that's what I wanted.
And I said, "So I've been thinking in the last few seconds. I give jobs to my students in high school. Do you know anything about jobs in school?" He said, "Oh, yeah. In kindergarten, I was the line leader." I said, "Hmm, we don't have a line leader in high school, but we have appropriate jobs." And I usually take a week or so to figure out what job would best fit what student. I do a multiple intelligence survey, and we tell a little bit about ourselves, but you know what, DJ? I don't need to do all that with you, because you're innately designed to be a greeter." He's like, "A greeter? What's that?" And I said, "A greeter is someone that will stand at my door every morning."
As everybody come in, I get to shake everybody's hand, appropriately hug the girls, that threw my mind off. And then she said, "On top of that, I get to come in front of her class and have my own session for two to three minutes. How does that sound?" That's what she said. I said, "It sounds too good to be true, so let me run it back to you." I said, "So you mean to tell me I get to stand outside your classroom, shake everybody's hand who comes by? Then on top of that, I get to come in front of the class to have my own session?" She was like, "Yeah." I said, "Well, I want, you know what I'm saying, I want to try this." She was like, "But it's one catch." And I remember, I dropped my head, like, I knew, I knew it was something, you know?
All you have to do is be on time.
Because if you're my greeter, that means you have to be the first one here so everybody get a chance to see you and shake your hand before they walk in my classroom. And I just remember shaking my head like, "All right, I'll try this." You know, I see what, it's something, it's something here I don't, I can't tell yet, but it was something there, and I just remember thinking, "I'll try this." And she said, "Okay, pick up your backpack that you threw down and go have a seat." And that was the first day of my new life.
Day two. I'm standing in the hall, and I see this mass of people just partying, and the only figurative language I can think of is Moses parting the Red Sea. And here comes this huge guy, and I hear these words that are so important for anybody watching this video. Everybody move out of my way, I've got to get to Ms. Porter's class on time, because listen, I have a job to do. I have a job to do. A disconnected child is a discouraged child. He needed to be encouraged, and every day, he stood from day two. He'd been in the Criminal Justice Center, he'd been expelled from the alternative school, he'd been in school, out of isolation, out of school suspension. Nothing worked. All he needed was to be encouraged. And he became my greeter. We usually have jobs just every nine weeks, but by unanimous vote of the class, he became the year-long greeter, because they felt nobody could do the job as well as DJ.
I feel like the experiences that I went through in my life was meant to happen so I can come back and help kids, help teachers understand. I feel like I have a gift that I need to share, a testimony that I would like to share, and I know I can help kids along with teachers. Oftentimes, teachers get into it with students, they have problems with students because they don't have the skills. And I feel like anytime I can help a teacher get the skills, she has a chance to save a life. And I often tell teachers, "I want you to have the same success story that Ms. Porter had. I want you to have that student that you walked down the aisle with to that graduation. I want you to have that student that said he owes his life to you." And the only reason she has that is because she had the skills of conscious discipline. So anything that's dealing with conscious discipline, I'm all for.
So we would just like to excitedly announce that he will be here October 24th at 6:00 at Snipes Academy, and we invite the community and the public to attend. We feel very honored to have DJ, who's an ambassador of conscious discipline, and to be proud that we implement this across our classrooms for preschool. So if you have any questions or anything...
Anybody have any questions?
Yes. I do. I'd like to draw out, how does it change a preschooler's life when you use that approach? What do you get from them, and how do they benefit?
It starts with relationships and connections.
Well, what I was going to say is, what we didn't see in this video is the fact that DJ was actually kicked out of a lot of his preschools because teachers didn't know how to coach him with his deficit in social skills. So when we teach this at our age, we're working with 3- and 4-year-olds, our goal is to prevent the lack of social skills, right? We're teaching them how they can self-regulate so that they don't get into the juvenile system, so that they don't want to be a part of gangs. They, they, they want to rely on themselves, and they want to, you know, seek out positive reinforcement instead of negative reinforcement.
And I would just add that for whatever, at already at a 3- and a 4-year-old, that we think that they come knowing what they need to do and how they need to act in class. This is the first time they've ever been in class. And for many of them, this is the first time they've ever seen anything like this and have had these kind of expectations. And what this program helps us do is it lets teachers know that they have this and they can do this, no matter whether they are, a few of them turning over some chairs or actually already hitting out. It starts really young, and when we can get them this connection at an earlier age, instead of, you know, it's great when that connection comes at any time, but if, when we can get them as 3 and 4, and they're connected going into kindergarten, then they can just go so much further.
How, how long is the training, and how challenging was it to, to, I guess, get the teachers on board initially? And how has the response been now at 3 years in?
Well, it is a transformation. It's a shift in our thinking and thought process. I think the beauty of it is we look at the teachers also. Often, when it comes to behavior management, we focus on the child. And this is equipping the teachers to be able to have that executive state of mind that they've got this. So we are on our third year of professional development. It comes along with a coaching-to-fidelity piece for conscious discipline administrators and also for our teachers. This will be our second year of implementing the coaches within the classrooms. We started with Johnson and are looking at some opportunities with Wrightsville Preschool for this upcoming year. And October 9th, we have our first conscious discipline for administrators of our preschool centers. So it's a school transformation, a school, a whole school solution.
So the initial training is, like, is it, in terms of saying, you know, we are using conscious discipline, is it like a week, or is it, so it's...
It's a journey.
But I'm assuming it's an ongoing thing?
It's a journey, it's a journey, and one step at a time. And the more we equip our people, our people, our school families...
And draw them in.
They, they're growing their school families, and the climate's changing, and so we see it even more walking into our buildings. And what our long-term outcome is, is that we can sustain that at our school level with our school families.
So speaking of families...
It's a change.
Drawing the parents in, because that's such a huge piece. How do you draw the parents into this and then continue what you're doing at school into the home? Are you able to offer any kind of training to the parents?
We were very fortunate, we started that last year and hope to piggyback on what we learned from that meeting with our parents. And a lot of the outcomes was, were astonishing to us because parents didn't realize that they were off track. What we see is what we do, and sometimes in our home environment, that doesn't look like it does in others' homes. So we do what we know. And so we make it a safe zone for our parents to have those conversations, to talk about appropriate ways. We also model that when we have our parent nights. We have them come to our school, our classroom centers, and our teachers model that, because it never was modeled to them as children. So we're hopeful that this will be a transformation for all of our pre-K centers.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shell, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, item eight, information, policies for first reading review, policy 902, public relations and school communications, policy 9025, rights of separated divorced parents and other regarding minor children, policy 9060, district-wide parental involvement in Title I schools, policy 9310, relations with governmental agencies, and policy 9330, relationship with emergency management, appendix C. Ms. Nichols?
Uh-huh, thank you, Mr. Higgins. As you recall, we are going through all the series in the policy manual, and the 9,000 series, which is the last one, is one that we felt was pertinent, that we look at so that we ensure that all the other policies certainly include the community and our family members in our decision-making. So I'm going to ask Ms. Qua LaBaum, who is the Communication Officer for the Public Relations Division, if she will share the first readings for us.
Yes, in policy 9,002, we are recommending a change of the word "publics" to stakeholders to reflect the more commonly used term, and we added a cross-reference to the procedures that was also added to the policy. Shall I keep going?
Yes, please.
Okay. In policy 9025, under section D, we updated the titles of the Deputy Superintendent and the Board's General Counsel to clarify who the points of contact were. Under policy 9060, we had to update it for changes set forth by the Every Student Succeeds Act, and that was reviewed and done in conjunction with the Instruction Department. Policy 9310, the Policy Committee recognized that this policy was a duplicate of policy 2210, and it better served as a function of the 2,000 series. And so we are recommending that it be deleted from the 9,000 series. Policy 9330, this policy is also a matter of general school administration, and the Policy Committee felt it was better served under the 2,000 series. That's it.
And you'll notice on the... And you'll notice on the, that policy, the 9330, that will be now 2215. So we'll have all that ready for the second reading in November. And thank you, Mrs. Qua LaBaum. Have any questions for the committee or for Mrs. Qua LaBaum on these?
No.
All right. And they'll be on for?
They'll be on for second reading for approval in November.
Okay.
So if you do look through and decide that there needs to be an addition or change, if you'll let us know, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
And Mrs. Qua LaBaum.
Next item, Future Teachers Career Academy at Isaac Bear Early College High School, appendix D, Dr. Holliday.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're really excited to bring to you tonight our initial report on our new partnership that we're going to hope to begin next year with Isaac Bear, New Hanover County Schools, and the University of North Carolina Wilmington. As you got at your places some information about Future Teacher Career Academy, your commitment as a board to trying to grow our own teachers has expanded one notch. You've gone with the Board Scholarship once the state did away with the teacher program. And now we're looking to expand this program, our own program basically, into, with UNCW and the Watson School of Education, excuse me, Watson College of Education. I'm old and I keep remembering it as a school. But tonight, I have Kristen Jackson, my Director of Student Support Services, and she's got her partner from UNCW, and of course, Mary Paul Bell, the Principal of Isaac Bear is also here. So we've got a very brief presentation we want to share with you, and we're excited about the start of this. We think with very little, in a way of infrastructure, we can begin a new program that you've already committed to trying to expand our New Hanover County Schools' teachers going into teaching. And we think this will be a very positive thing. And once again, the New Hanover County Schools will be taking the lead in teacher education. So Kristen, thank you.
Before you begin, I would like to recognize Dean of the College of Education, Mr. Dean Dempsey is here. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Dean Dempsey.
We are here tonight to tell you just a little bit about the planning for the Future Teachers Career Academy. We're really excited about this because we have a longstanding partnership with UNCW. They, the best partnership that we have includes working with them, with our student teachers. If we need anything from them, we can call them. So we're very excited that we are going to continue this partnership in this way. So really what it is, is an academy within Isaac Bear High School that will focus on kids that want to become teachers, which is the best job in the world. So what we're doing is inspiring our high school students, oh, I forgot to learn this thing, to become educators, encouraging them to become educational leaders, and recruit teachers for all of you. And we will give graduates consideration for hiring, priority consideration for hiring when they finish the Watson College of Education. We are doing this at Isaac Bear Early College, at ninth and 10th grade. In 11th and 12th grades, they'll start taking their college courses. And then if you participate in this program, you'll be given consideration, priority considerations for Watson College of Education. How it's going to work is we're going to focus on 20 New Hanover County Schools freshmen, so kids that are in eighth grade right now. We're adding 10 additional students to the cohort at Isaac Bear. Right now, they have 65. We're going to add 10, which will make it 75. And then we're going to take 10 of the existing slots for the Future Teacher Career Academy. So out of the 75 students at Isaac Bear High School, 20 will be in the Future Teachers Career Academy. Now I'm going to turn it over to Brian Brinkley from UNCW that's going to talk a little bit about the how.
So as Kristen said, our first cohort is going to begin in the fall of 2018, 2019. They'll follow the early college process. The application process will go through, will be in the month of January this year. As you are aware, there were some changes there across the board. There will be student parent information sessions in November and December about this and all the other signature programs, as I understand it. The teachers and school counselors will also have an information session in December. We're going to have an invitation event for the eighth-grade teachers and counselors at the middle schools. Because as you well know, teachers are the ones that inspire other teachers. We know that they'll listen to them, and we want to get these materials that you have in your packet in the hands of the teachers and in the guidance counselors at eighth grade to help encourage and push those that they know will make good teachers and who want to, to, as Kristen said, enter the best profession in the world. So how will this work? What will the program actually look like? Answer that in brief, but what we want to do is to encourage all of the constituencies' participation in creating the program. We know the basics. We're going to work at UNCW and the Watson College of Education to have special events for those students who are in Isaac Bear, to have classes and specific learning opportunities, maybe a bit of travel to be able to see schools, unique educational opportunities, to host mentoring opportunities for those kids. I'm the Director of the Education Lab, so one of the things that I would really like for them to do is work with children one-on-one to see what it's like to be a teacher. They'll receive early advisor support, and of course, what we would hope was their graduation projects would have something to do with education. We want them to begin early thinking about that career and how important it is to the future of everything. They say that, you know, teaching is the beginning of all other careers. What questions do you have?
We'll give you a little background. This started out of a conversation with Dean Dempsey and Marilyn Shearer, who's the Provost, about what we could do to boost teacher enrollment in our schools. Because if you remember last year, there was reports of that going down. And UNCW is our primary partner for producing teachers. So getting them hooked early, getting them into those programs earlier. In this program, they may be able to knock off that first year or that second year of those requirements before they have to apply to the College of Education. And hopefully, this program will help those folks as they get ready to make that application. It may also demonstrate to some folks that teaching is not the profession that they thought it would be at the end of the day. But we thought it was a natural outgrowth of what we did with our Board Scholarships in an attempt to simply increase that pool of highly qualified candidates. Because the college has always given us good candidates, and we want to continue to build on that.
Any other questions? Sounds like a good opportunity for us to, again, home-growth some teachers.
Well, I'm a UNCW graduate, so this is very exciting.
I just want to say that I, my daughter was lucky enough to have Mr. Brinkley as a teacher in third and fourth grade, and I think the school will be in good hands with him as a part of it. So I'm glad that this is happening. Thank you for your hard work, all of you.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Kristen, at some point, we'll bring back a formal memorandum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is the precursor to that, okay? Dean, is there anything you'd like to add?
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent Report. Any support?
Two quick items. Tomorrow, we will have an inspection on three pre-K classrooms located over at the Mosley Center, which is the Blunt School. I anticipate that will go well, and then we will have students in there very quickly after that, probably a ribbon cutting on that, tentatively scheduled for October 25th, I believe. We're working with the county to put that together. Also, next Friday, our Superintendent Students Advisory Council will kick off its first meeting of the year.
Anything else?
That concludes that report.
Okay. Consensus items, personnel, appendix E, Dr. Wilmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, do I hear a second? Have a second. Any questions or discussion?
I did want to ask Dr. Wilmers, there was a wonderful list of substitutes. Is this, do we get a new list every year, or are these additional people that want to be?
These are additional people and some current people, so it's a combination.
Okay. And I see we've hired some bus drivers.
Yes, ma'am, we have.
Still looking.
I did see the bus down at Walmart today advertising.
We're trying to move it around so everybody will get a chance to see it.
Good idea. Good idea. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's approved. Okay. Change of school assignments, appendix F, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I ask that you release this student to the adjacent county because the parent is employed at that county.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, budget amendments, appendix G, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to point out a couple of items. These amendments include a renewal of the state resource officer grant for $110,000 and also the budget for the lottery projects for the applications that you approved in August, but the state approved in September.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, whole business. Item A has been struck off, so we'll move to item B, policy for second reading. Ms. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. The 1,000 series for your approval tonight, the school board governance and operations, there are seven policies there. And I would like to point out to you, policy 1240, page two of two, Mrs. Adams has added since the first reading that, to help us understand the 12 o'clock hours that we have to have within the two-year period, and that period of time runs from July 1st through June 30th. So as I pointed out at our last district meeting, New Hanover County was not recognized because all of our board members did not achieve their clock hours. So I encourage you to follow this policy and work with Mrs. Adams to ensure that you get credit for all the hours of conferences that you attend. So those are the 1,000 series. The 2,000 series, general school operations, there are two policies there. And Dr. Markley can answer any question that we have on the 2,000 series.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Markley?
I move for approval of all of these policies in one motion.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion, I have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on our agenda, item C, redistricting guideline, principles, and timelines, appendix J, Dr. Markley and Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson is going to come to the podium. This is the follow-up discussion from, that was the informational item last week. Mr. Anderson will present the changes based on the inputs from the last board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Markley. The guiding principles and the timeline for redistricting were presented, as Dr. Markley said at the last board meeting, for information. We made changes based on discussion and have presented those for you tonight. And I'll go through those briefly. And the guiding principles, the board requested item number one be added, that the Board of Education is committed to maintaining neighborhood schools. That's the only change in the guiding principles. Elementary redistricting.
Let's do the guiding principles first, then we can go to the timeline.
Do you want to vote on those individually?
Please.
Or, any?
All right. We've been asked to vote on the guiding principles.
Move for approval of the guiding principle.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
I don't see how we can adhere to the first one because, especially for high schools, we can't guarantee that it's a neighborhood, it's going to be a neighborhood school. So I think it's a misnomer at best.
Well, I think the, for me, the definition of neighborhood school is in the definition. It doesn't necessarily mean it's in your backyard. It just means that you have a contiguous school district.
I think it's misleading, and I think it's, I can't vote for it.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, I struggle. When I ran for office, I supported neighborhood schools. And I still do. I see the value of it. But I don't think you start by saying that your number one item is to maintain neighborhood schools. Yes, neighborhood schools would be a tool that you have to choose in serving children. And so I think you, if you start with that, then you kind of handcuff yourself, as Ms. Step said. I'm not supportive of that in our defining items. I'm not necessarily against neighborhood schools per se, but I don't think you need it in your guiding principles. So I would move to strike that from the guiding principles.
I would agree with what Mr. Shell said.
All right, so you're making an amended motion?
Yes.
All right.
I think we all have agreed that we would like to keep students as close to their neighborhoods as possible, but to put that as our number one guiding principle without looking at what's in the best interest of all students. It just, I just, I don't think we can do that. I don't think we should.
I think we could incorporate it with number eight. Doesn't have to be.
I think number eight's fine.
I think the public needs to know, though, that what the boards, if we are for neighborhood schools or not, if we take it out altogether, how would they know that?
I think the public knows full well that this board has, for many years, been supportive of neighborhood schools.
Maybe.
You've got a guiding principle here, and you're starting with an item that is challenged.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
I'm through.
Okay. I agree with Ms. Nichols that that would be an excellent addition to number eight. I think it would solve the question of a couple of board members who don't want it as the number one objective. And it would be, they both support each other. So I would like to amend the amended motion so that we combine numbers one and number eight and put it in the position of, which would then be number seven.
All right, I have an amended, amended motion, do I hear a second for the amended, amended motion?
Second.
All right, I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all right. We will start with the last amended motion.
Which is mine.
Which is Ms. Kavanaugh's. All those in favor of Ms. Kavanaugh's amended motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. Aye? That, but it did carry. I think it carried, okay. So that is the, is now the motion that we are voting on.
Can we, can I ask for clarification for the record, what number eight will read?
Yes.
Number eight will read, "The Board of Education is committed to maintaining neighborhood schools, period. Attendance's own boundaries should minimize change for students." And that would then be number seven. Do you have a problem with that, Dr. Markley?
I don't have a vote here.
Do you have a suggestion?
You seem flustered, that's why I'm asking.
I, I, I mean, and I don't think I've made my position clear on this over the, over my time here. I understand the concept of trying to keep kids as close to school as possible. And I think we can do that as we do this. But neighborhood schools are at best an elementary concept, not, because once you get to middle and high school, you're aggregating schools into larger organizations. So, I mean, I understand what the board's position is, I just.
I think, in my opinion, I've said this ever since the time I ran and lost for the Board of Education. and that is that my concept of neighborhood schools is a contiguous school district. Meaning you don't have satellites, if you can help it. You, everybody who attends that school does not have to go by another school of their grade level to get to the school they attend. To me, that is what a neighborhood school is. Because you're right. I mean, we've got four, really four senior high schools, traditional senior high schools. It's split the county up, they cover large areas, admittedly, it's not in somebody's backyard. But the fact is that if you attend Ashley, then you'd be in the southern part of the county. If you attend Hoggard, you're probably going to be more in the central part of the county. If you attend Laney, you're going to be in the northern part of the county. If you attend Hanover, you're probably going to be a combination of some northwestern part of the county and the central part of the county. But that would be a contiguous district. You wouldn't have the important kids from Wrightsville Beach, for example, to Hanover, or kids from Wrightsville Beach necessara, or kids from Castle Hain to Ashley. That's, and I would say the same thing for middle school. That's my concept of neighborhood school.
I'd like to call the question.
All right. Question's been called. All those in favor of the amended resolution as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
I have two noes, all right. I have 42 in favor of the proposed guiding principles as amended. All right, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The elementary redistricting timeline, after discussion at the last board meeting, we adjusted the release of the plan approximately three months. This would allow for more time for board input, especially early on in the process. And it also adjusted our public input session responding to those two concerns at the board meeting.
So, three months, so what now, what would be the dates?
The redistricting plan, the final plan is approved by the board in December of 2018. It's released in January 2019. That's a little over a year before kindergarten registration, student assignments are released, and it would go into effect July of 2020.
Okay. So, the vote would, the plan would be presented in the eighth, in November of 18. The vote would be in December of 18, and it would be released in January of 19.
That's correct.
Okay. You have heard the proposal? Do I hear a motion to accept the?
I move.
All right, I have a motion to accept the proposed elementary school redistricting plan, do I hear a second?
I can.
I have a second, any questions or discussion?
I would just note on the first line, it should be draft proposal, not draft proposal.
Oh.
We'll correct that on the final one.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is approved. All right, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. The last one is high school and middle school redistricting. This is, this was added at the request of the board to provide a timeline. As we had discussed, we were looking at making some changes in district lines for the beginning of the next, of next school year, 2018-19. So, we, the board requested that we put this timeline together for your review and consideration.
Move for approval.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is approved. Now, let me be clear about something. If we get down to a point where the board still has questions on, you know, February of, before February of 18, how tied into mandating we have to do something have we done here? You know, or maybe I'll ask Mr. Bullard that.
This is your timeline, so you can amend it at any time.
Okay, so if we get into some long discussions or some.
For example, we've got middle school renovations coming up.
Right.
If they lag behind and you wanted to adjust, as a board, this is your timeline, but you can always extend or adjust the timeline.
Okay. All right, I just want to be clear about that.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item, naming of the new gymnasium at John T. Hoggard High School, appendix K, Dr. Markley.
We have had a request, and I have Dr. Sullivan here from Hoggard T. High School to rename the gym, the Sheila E. Bowles Gymnasium. I'd ask Dr. Sullivan to come up and just explain how this came about, and I'll get to the comments in a moment. Just to remind the public that we have a process where you can put a school, if you want to name a facility, it goes, comes forward, and it is a six-month comment period.
So, it's just the beginning of a six-month comment?
The six-month comment period is over.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Markley. Once the new gym was built, was under construction, we're still kind of fixing up a few final touches for it. Discussion became with parents and some teachers and coaches of who it should be named after. And Coach Sheila Bowles was one of the first ones who came to everyone, top of everyone's mind. Coach Bowles is an institution in Hoggard. She was the first varsity boys' basketball coach in North Carolina. She's also a graduate of UNCW, holds several records there. She was the first female scholar athlete to be given a scholarship for basketball at UNCW. So, she holds a lot of high esteem in the area, in the state. She's very well-known, and we feel it would be a great opportunity to recognize her and her accomplishments to be able to name this gym after her. I think the public comments were overwhelmingly positive about this opportunity.
Received over 300 comments, and all but three were complete truths, just simply stellar comments.
Move for approval.
All right, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is approved. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, next item on the agenda under old business is the the appearance of the plaque that is to be placed at Porter's Neck Elementary School. Many of you have, I think, received, in fact, as it shows on here now. It has been sent out to the board for review, there have been comments. I don't know that we have to vote on it, but it's been considered that we ought to vote on it, so I'm bringing it on for consideration. So, do I hear any emotion?
Move for approval.
I can.
I have a motion and a second to approve the plaque as presented here. Understand that it has been discussed that the words "present" by my name would be, would just be open-ended.
Yes, that was.
Yes, sir, I would like to get some clarification on that. Actually, the discussion was to delete the word "present," just leave the dash, blank.
That was my suggestion, because it's very confusing if you don't look up there in 2017, and you're, you know, 10 years from now, you think, "That man is still the chair."
May be.
He certainly has fortitude.
All right, thank you.
Yes. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
With, I'm challenged by this on a couple of levels. And I know the board, we've had some discussion on this. I guess the first observation is, the people on this plaque all voted in favor of this project. And you certainly have Bordeaux and LS3P and Dr. Markley. You are missing some of the key people that did an extraordinary amount of work. And that's LeAnn and that's Eddie. I think if you're going to put a plaque out there on the people that did the work that were meaningful in its, in its construction. My first point would be that at least those two should be added. There may be others that were a big part of this. You know, board members vote for things and things get done. And you rarely give credit where credit is due. If you're a board member, you get your name on the plaque, and you live in infamy on that building. The second part for me is, as I have studied the funding for the school system, and school systems, as a general rule, we all know, but I don't think the public knows, that you've got about 60% is funded by the state and 10% roughly by the federal. And that leaves 30% comes from county commissioners, comes from their efforts to fund the schools. And I can tell you firsthand, it's a challenge at the county level with all the demands they have. And I think it, to have the county commissioners on this, since they voted for this project, would be necessary and appropriate. I also know that the county commissioner stepped up and told this board and the superintendent that it would fund this school, whether the bond issue passed or not, which enabled us to open the school a year early. So, I am one that has sat on both sides of this. And I can tell you, we have, we've had sessions with elected officials, state and local, and we've actually, in presentations, told them the value of team, what teamwork is. Team meaning all of us together supporting something to make it special. When we went to the ribbon cutting, a lot was talked about how the colors were carefully chosen to bring energy and passion to the students. There's an awful lot that goes into this, and I think the school board is missing a tremendous opportunity to put the people on here that made, that were a big part of making it happen. And that includes key staff and folks that write the check. So, that's my two cents. I know y'all have heard some of that before. I offer it up as an opportunity. I'd like to see us consider redoing this with that energy in it and giving credit where credit is due. Thank you.
I, Bruce stole most of my two cents, so I'll just add one cent. And I feel like as a board member, we participated in a small way to this, in that we voted for it. We talked about the angle of an overhang and discussed some minor changes to the overall design, schematic design. But as Bruce pointed out, here's an opportunity for us to really step up and show the value of teamwork and put on this plaque those that did a lot of the heavy lifting. And so, I would love to be more inclusive about, you know, memorializing that and just being very thoughtful about who does get to be on here, rather than basically just us and a few other folks. Because there are a lot more people who played a very large role in making this school come to fruition a lot sooner than it would have otherwise.
Bruce, are you making an amended motion to include Eddie, LeAnn, and I assume the county commissioners?
And Bill Hans, I would say.
And Bill Hans?
Yes, sir.
All right, you've heard the amended.
Well, I mean, let me say, if the, I mean, if the staff need to look at it, to rework it, and have other ideas, but those are my ideas, yes, sir.
Okay, well. All, you've heard the, there's an amended motion now. Do I hear a motion to accept the amended motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
No.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Aye, now.
Now, you vote for the original motion.
Well, I didn't get any feedback, but one of my suggestions was that this is pretty much the kind of plaques we've been putting on the schools. But we can also do, as Valita's office does such a beautiful job with the big wooden plaques, that we could do more of the history of the bond referendum, all the people that served on that, as well as adding our commissioners and certainly our central office staff that work, and make it, put it where people coming in to the office would be able to see this and know our appreciation for so many more that we couldn't get on this plaque. It's expensive as it is, we keep changing and adding. It won't have the same thing, I think, as having a separate history of the school. Because 10 years from now, people won't know how hard some people worked to get this bond passed, to get the money.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, question's been called. All those in favor of the Porter's Neck Elementary School plaque as presented signify by saying aye.
That's the original motion?
The original motion.
Aye.
Taking out, with changing, taking out the "present" and just leaving it, dash, blank.
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Opposed.
It passes 42. Next item, new business. Schematic design presentation for Myrtle Grove Middle School renovation, appendix L, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I'm going to turn this over to LeAnn Lawrence, who'll introduce the project and the speakers tonight.
Good evening. We are very pleased to present schematic design for the Myrtle Grove Middle School renovation project. Myrtle Grove is one of four middle school renovations included in the 2014 bond program. The scope will include major renovations to improve building systems and infrastructure with limited demolition and space reconfiguration. Our overall goal is to enhance the facility and its ability to serve as an appropriate learning environment at this time. I'd like to introduce Bruce Bowman with Bowman, Murray, Hemingway Architects, and he will make the schematic design presentation. Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Let me start by saying, if I get too far in the weeds, or not far enough, please feel free to guide me. We've been very excited to be part of this project for Myrtle Grove. And once we got into the details, we realized there's not really going to be a lot of opportunity to make large building changes, additions. This is mostly fixing some things that desperately need to be fixed, and I'll attempt to go into that in a little detail. School size is about 90,000 square feet. We have a budget of 7.2 million, plus or minus, including contingency. We plan for the project to start, and Dr. Markley, thank you for indicating that the timeline may change, but it won't need to. Summer of 2018. Summer of 2018 and it will go on for about 15 months, capturing two summer periods. Our construction manager, we're delighted to say, is Montith Construction. Mike Doyle is here from Montith. They were also our partners in the Hager Gymnasium. And so we work very well together and they are helping us with constructability issues, monitoring the costs at each stage and so on. We had a very, let me advance here. Okay, I forgot I was running, I'm running two slides at one time. We had a very thorough survey of all the teachers, educators in the school and it extended somewhat beyond that, but mainly was the educators and about a 40-point questionnaire, tabulated the responses, took out the detailed additional notes and just scoured that and tried to put together a program and see what was really important to them to, whoops, wrong direction here. There we go. All right, back one, double hit it. Okay. So the school, as you know, is on Piner Road, which runs along the right there, and it's a large multi-wing, one-story school. We will be positioning some mobile classroom units to the rear towards the baseball field, which is our main available space to stage so that we can work on one wing of the school at a time while during the school year of '18, '19. And, let's see. The, one of the main elements that we're gonna do is we're, in this project, is we're gonna bring the Phase 2 and 3 mechanical rework to the project, basically all new air handlers, new preconditioning. They're suffering from a terrible indoor air quality there, a lot of high humidity. We have temperature control issues and sadly, we have very limited thermal envelope and a lot of air infiltration. So one of the main things we're doing is we're really putting this into an appropriate mechanical envelope and then putting in the mechanical units to correct for all that. Other highlights are replacing the operable windows. As you can see, quite frankly, about half of all the operable windows are completely fogged, which is why you see the blinds drawn like this. And so hopefully, they'll be able to tilt their blinds open when we're through and enjoy the outside. Adding a fire sprinkler system, which is the easiest and most expeditious pathway to overcome a number of the building code things. We could go in and rework fire ratings and so forth, but we have a very limited timeframe. This is a safety feature that will help us overcome that and adds safety for the children. New LED lighting and that would include some rebates from Duke Energy and some limited electrical audiovisual improvements. Now, we will get into making an impactful change to the building in that we're gonna replace all the flooring. They're experiencing a number of flooring issues. Some wet soils out there that are creating some problems for the flooring, so we're gonna encapsulate the moisture, put in new floor tile. We're gonna repaint the interior of the school, put in new ceiling systems, which is partly necessitated by the sprinkler system and the light fixtures, and some select toilet fixture, other improvements as they are needed, but not a wholesale reboot of that. So, let's see, did that work? Oops. Okay. As you can see here, we have six wings and the center part of the building, including the media center, lobby, offices, cafeteria toward the bottom of the page, and the electric wing to the top of the page. These are functions that do not work well in a mobile environment, so we are choosing to do this work in both the 2018 and the 2019 summer period so that we're not, so that the school can really function while this is ongoing. And basically, all the heavy lifting, the mechanical and the sprinkler and that sort of thing would be in the first summer. Floor tile painting and other sort of dress-up will be in the second summer because it's just too much to compress into that timeframe. But then, as we go into, there we go. As we go into the multiple phases, basically, beginning with the 8th grade wing, we're going in a clockwise fashion. We're going to do the 8th grade wing for about two and a half months, followed by the 7th grade wing, followed by the 6th grade wing, and then each of the groups will move into the modular units while that work is ongoing. And we've coordinated the schedule with the principals such that the new students arriving to the school don't start out in the modular units that they can start in the school and try to find the sweet spot for that. So that sort of reviews the phasing and we have a couple of new design elements we're bringing to the table. We're adding two new accessible toilet rooms to the lobby area. We are doing some accessible improvements and a little dress-up work in the front office area. And we have a couple of things that are on the possible list, such as new bleachers in the gym and a few other things, but it's looking like, you know, we're sort of hitting our budget limit and we're gonna maybe study these as add alternates. So to conclude, we have estimated the project to be within our appropriated funding and the construction manager has done a parallel estimate to that. And also has concluded that we're within the budget, but for those few things that we're still studying. And we find that, early readings are that we are on schedule, giving the, doing the sort of 15-month cycle that I've outlined for you. And we continue to work with the school and I look forward to implementing the project. And I'd like to say before questions, it's been a pleasure working with Eddie and Leanne and Irene, who would have been here tonight but got in a thunderbender. So it's really terrific working with your people.
No for approval, is presented?
I have a motion or here a second?
Second.
I have a second. I want to say to you, we always appreciate trying to keep it at budget. We do. I do have a question, Mr. Anderson. When he says, "Where's the money coming from for the mobile units?", is that out of the construction budget or?
That is. It's a, you know, it's a turnkey project. It's all budgeted in the 2014 bond.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
This was, this is the project you'll hear about next. When we talked about this bond, we talked there'd be some new construction, but there'd be a lot of stuff that goes in and just fixes stuff that because of deferred maintenance, because of recession, may not be the stuff somebody sees when they drive by a school, but this will take this building and give us another 20 years or 30 years of this building.
Yes, sir. There's good bones in the building. It just needs a little help.
See, something always has a matter for me. You spoke about the roof. And I'm sure Mr. Anderson knows my opinion about roofs. Is this a replacement of the roof or is it just, I mean, what's being done to the roof?
Well, sir, the shingles, asphalt shingles on the roof are, they're about halfway into their life. But the reality is, is very limited insulation, in some cases, no insulation at the roof. In some cases, 1-inch insulation. Really need to have about 4 inches of insulation. And given the very large above-ceiling volume and access to that, there's no way to get insulation in from the underneath, so we're putting it in on top and we're putting new asphalt shingles on top of that. It'll give us an opportunity maybe to bring some new aesthetic or color to the table from the exterior. And we studied other roofing materials, but the shingles are the most economical and will allow us to direct most of that money toward the necessary programming.
So when all is said and done, this building will be totally re-roofed?
Yes, sir. Except for very limited, maybe 5 to 10% of some existing flat roofs that have already been done and have insulation.
All right, so I won't have to be re-roofing this building anytime soon?
That is correct.
I have a question on the last, the slide before this one.
Okay.
Where the possible?
Oops, I guess you already did that.
Okay. Where it says relocate and expand one science room. If we don't have the money to do that now, would that be an issue later on? Could you relocate it later on?
Well, the thinking was that we may switch it with the room that's next to it that just happens to be larger. And the thing is, when we relocate the science room, we have to bring it into compliance with the state standards, which has a trickle-down effect. And so, you know, we're gonna talk to the principal to see if she would rather us, you know, if we can't afford it now, maybe we bring a couple of those things to the table in the existing science room, be it an eyewash station or something, you know, that may be helpful or necessary, rather than relocate it because the sprinkler and the mechanical and the envelope issues, they're sort of an all-or-nothing kind of thing and we have to carefully choose what things may be deferred to a future need. And I might add, we have a new principal at the school this year that has slightly different priorities than the one last year when we were doing programming.
Shell?
Yes, sir. Will this change the capacity in any way?
No, the new principal was very clear, we're not to take out any square footage, even for ductwork. And so we're, the school density or occupant load would remain the same, unchanged.
And what are you doing, is anything you're doing here affecting technology?
Well, we were studying and may still study locating monitors throughout the classrooms where there are now smart boards and projectors. And we're debating with the principal whether we do that in a limited location where they are most needed or in a comprehensive fashion, and it looks like we might be scaling that back a little bit. The technology is already there. It's just, it's not the newest technology. And, you know, the priority would seem to be more to Media Center and a couple of places that have that higher demand for that latest technology.
How much are we cutting the budget to limit the technology upgrade?
Well, the monitors came after the budget was, and scope was sort of framed, so we were working that back into the budget by, you know, opting to move some other things around. And, you know, don't really have a final decision on that, but.
If I could add to that, Mr. Shelby, we have projectors and smart boards or whiteboards in every classroom. There is technology in every classroom, but as you can imagine over the years, some of it has been pieced together. Our goal in this project is to make sure that we're consistent throughout the classrooms and that we have, as a minimum, we have projectors and whiteboards in every classroom and that that technology is consistent from space to space. Where we will be adding technology, we will be looking at the Recordex monitors. And those will probably be limited to some conference space, some admin space, or some workspace where that technology would be available to more people than just a single classroom.
And I, thank you for that. I was really speaking more to the infrastructure and the actual items that you put in. We had, I think, I thought we had talked about in a prior building that it was important that we upgrade the infrastructure. So are you both saying that's not necessary here?
Well, we are. The wiring has been upgraded.
It's new in the last five years.
Yeah, it's category 6. It's a good, high-quality data wire.
So we're making sure.
That's fortunately already in place.
Yeah, when we did the Hager project, we had talked about upgrading the wiring there because a lot of that wiring went back to the old net days when we first put wiring in. So Myrtle Grove is actually ahead of the curve on the, in terms of the internal wiring.
The last question, Mr. Anderson, do we have automated bleachers in other schools?
We do have automated bleachers in all of our new schools. And if we replace bleachers, we replace them with automated bleachers.
Bruce, I appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Bruce.
I know you're involved in it. The details are there. So thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting this schematic presentation?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
All right, I have been requested to take a break, maybe 10 minutes. So we will take a 10-minute break. Please plan to be back here, actually, maybe about 25 after. I'm gonna make it a little short.